Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, March 16th, 2015 Board Meeting. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Let's do it.
Call the board.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's have a call to order, please.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Keith Mattoon.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
And Rick Pavanato.
Here. Let's move on, I need, can we do approval of minutes from...
I move that we approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
And Rick Pavanato.
Aye. We've come to the reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote on tonight. The second is intended for audience members to address the board any topic pertaining to District 99. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, come on.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Julie Devine. My address is 6570 Terrace, just that way.
Thank you.
I've been a Downers Grove resident for 14 years now, and I'm here tonight representing Hornet Swim Club. I'm the president of the club. I know many people frequently associate Hornet Swim Club with Hinsdale South because of the Hornet, so I just want to tell you a little bit about us because we do rent Downer South quite frequently for our club. So, we actually practice out of two schools, and our membership is comprised mainly of Downers Grove residents. That is the biggest community that we draw from, and we currently have about 220 swimmers. Over 100 of those are District 99 residents, and then the rest of them come from 10 other communities. So, this year, 20 of our swimmers were part of the Downers North and Downer South high school teams, and we had some great swimmers, two state qualifiers, Sam Dumford from Downer South and Bob Benato from Downers North. We sent six new girls to the Downer South team this year, and I believe they were undefeated and conference champs this year. Over the next however many years, you can expect about 10 to 20 great new high school swimmers coming into the program. These are my two daughters, Jillian's in 7th grade and will be at South in two years. Laney's in 4th grade right now, so she's got a while. But, we are very thankful and appreciative of the opportunity to rent the District 99 pools. It makes a huge impact to our program. We hope that it's helping the community and the schools as well. We continue to have strong interest from Downers Grove residents in additional practice time, earlier practice time, and pretty much just being able to accept more kids. We have to turn away a lot of kids because we just don't have enough pool time or space. Pool's our limited resource. So, we do appreciate the time that we have. Our understanding is that rental time is given on a priority basis based on percentage of club members that are District 99 residents and not necessarily the number of District 99 residents in the club. That is the policy. We hope that moving forward, there can be some flexibility to look at the total number of residents served because we are serving a lot of District 99 kids, and we'd like to continue doing so. Special shout-out to Michelle Cannon. She does a great job managing the facility. She's very organized, she gives us her invoices. She's always on top of things. You've been a pleasure to work with, so thank you. And we look forward to, you know, feeding you some strong swimmers into the high schools over the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, let's move on. Recommendations or reports from the superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Pavanato. The first report is an update on our facility rentals, and Mark Stalen and Michelle Cannon have worked on this report. I'll let them present it to you. Need an issue, we have a light issue.
Yeah, maybe we could catch the front. Well, we just wanted to give a brief update on rentals. We, I think it's been a couple of years or so since we've done one. We have had a little bit of change in the program, so we want to tell you about that. And just, let's start going right through it here. The overview is very similar to what we did last time, and just because there's always some individuals out there who might not be familiar with the background, I'm going to cover that in a slide or two. We do have board policy and administrative regulation pertaining to this. I'll cover that. Goals of the current rental efforts, and then revenue recaps, and then again, expectations for the future of the program. We're kind of focused right now. So, if we start with the background, prior to '97 rentals were very limited because there really wasn't much open time. Our programs used up most of our facility, and then the Park, Downers Grove Park District and our feeder districts basically ate up most of the available time we had and the reasonable hours of the fields that we wanted to be used. In 1997, we added the field houses, and that really opened up a lot of interest in the renters coming in. We had many new groups. We had so many that we decided it was time to start setting rates and make sure you're uniform across the district, and that's really how we really started into this more full-blown rental operation. And again, I'm going to apologize, I don't know how to stop those scissors from, they're going to be doing that the whole time. I kind of like it, though, you know. But, we did have some, a couple waves of really big operating cuts, and they were district-wide responses that we took to these cuts, and they were largely an impact of two things. One being property tax caps that were limiting to inflationary increases, but also because we were having still some growing enrollment, and we were really kind of peaking at that time with the enrollment, which caused a separate pressure on top of us that really isn't tied to inflation. So, we were having to deal with those issues, and so there was a lot of work going through the budgets at that time. We did reduce staff. We increased the FTE ratio by a couple basis points, but we also reduced after-school buses, activity buses, and some smaller programs that were not as heavily being used in the district. But, it also made us look really hard at some of the aspects of facility usage, and in particular, I have to say, the pools were a big area of concern for us because we, at that time, had an intergovernmental agreement, actually had two intergovernmental agreements with the Park District. One just covered the pools by themselves, and we were hoping just to recover our operating costs for the pools, but that wasn't happening every year, largely because the Park District was having trouble with just having enough interest in all of their programming to generate a profit in that program. And so, we went to a cost-recovery basis, not just for the pools, but for all of our facilities at that point in time. Cost-recovery basis, the way we, you know, define it is out-of-pocket costs for all our staffing, which we do supervision custodial, but also any utilities. We estimated costs for those, supplies and special equipment costs, because sometimes some areas, say the auditoriums, they want to use the systems in there for either lighting or just for the audio systems. So, we have separate costs that we assign to those areas. Field gym usage, one exception again, we still have one remaining intergovernmental agreement with the Park District where there's reciprocal use of the athletic facilities at no charge to either side, either us using theirs or they're using ours. And North and South do both, you still use some of the Park District facilities. 8.20 is the policy, the ad reg that we have along with it, clarifies that our focus, and this is important for really what we're doing now, and we intend to go and I'll cover that a little bit at the end, but our main focus still is for desire to be used by our community. There is a preference for in-district groups defined by when a majority of the membership reside in the District 99 boundaries, and so those individuals do have a preference in terms of access to, in the hierarchy of who would have first choice to rent an area. There's regulations for the use with, and there's three categories for charging fees. A group, it's an A being a C, A group, there's no facility charge. So, if a District 58 wants to use our facilities, we don't charge them even a facility, an estimated cost for facilities. We would only charge them for out-of-pocket costs if we have special supervision or special CMG costs incurred. So, we try and keep it just pure out-of-pocket. The B rental group is really the same as A, but we also do charge an estimated facility charge. These would be community groups who come in to use the facilities, and so there's a small facility charge, and that is based, is expected to be as close to break-even as we can calculate it. And then a C rental is the same as a B, but added on another 50% for facility cost. And the idea there is that the buildings were being so heavily used by rental groups, but we got some groups coming from outside of our boundaries, or these, or for-profit groups, we were feeling, the buildings were feeling stretched, and so we said, "Look, what we'll do is we can maybe add a premium to it." And that premium for the facilities, we feed back into each of the two buildings to allow them to offset any other costs that they would have, maybe to help replace some of those bulbs in the auditoriums, maybe to really use it at their own discretion, though they don't have to do it and put the money right back into the same area. So, those are the three categories of costs that we've been using, and they've been working fairly well for us. Then, we also hired a facility rental manager. I think you had an opportunity to meet Maureen Fear, who was our first rental manager, and she came in because rental was, rentals were becoming more time-consuming. It was a responsibility of the assistant principals, and, which was very difficult for them to get back and forth with some of these renters. Sometimes they want to do tours. It was a big, taking away a lot of the time, and we really had two different schools trying to do the same thing. So, the rental manager idea really has worked out well. It was in 2011's when we started it, really focusing on organizing the processes and maximizing our usage, so we did a little bit more of the marketing side going on at this point, where the goal was to increase the total usage and maximize our facilities. Slightly different focus, and try and make sure we had uniformity across the district in terms of the contract that was being used, the keeping of the records for the certificates of insurance that we require and things like that, and so that we would have one person really designated, and it'd be easier for rentals to find that person, and it's easier to share across the district. If one facility is, say, being rented, but all of a sudden they get bumped at the last minute, that person knows what's available at the South campus and can move it. So, it's really to be responsive to the renters that came to us. In 2014-15, we changed things a little bit. Maureen Fear had left the district, and actually in 2014, 2013 she left, and so we hired a new replacement, and this is the lady sitting next to me, Michelle Cannon. And this is, what we did at that point, though, is I, it was a good timing this last year. Michelle, for a year or two, really a year and a half really, was running rentals the same as Maureen was. But, when Lyndon Neiman, who was my assistant, was retiring, we decided not to replace her and that we would share the duties of the rental along with that position. And we were trying to figure it out. Her days are never the same, and neither are ours in the business office, but it's somewhere between 60 to 65% on the rental side and maybe, you know, going to the position of supporting me in the office.
If I could add to what Mark's presenting, when we added the district-wide position in 2011, the understanding was that that person would pay his or her own salary through the rentals.
Yes.
It was part of the incentive to sort of get more business.
Yes.
And I think we were always successful at that.
Yeah.
We were always able to more than pay that person's salary. Now, we've reached a point, because of combining the roles, that's not such an issue for us because we don't really have that salary anymore, at least only a small part of it.
Right. And you'll see, this is where I'll let, actually, Michelle take over and hit a few slides here so you get to meet her, and she can, she really knows the rentals much better than I do, and so I'll just let her go on.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. As Mark said, I started in 2013, but you can see how the numbers have gone up significantly since we started renting out the pools on our own as opposed to the Park District. The facilities, the athletic facilities have increased a little bit. What's really grown over the last couple of years is our auditorium use. Between, there's dancers, there's musical theater productions. I've just contracted with a church who's moving into North High School, so the auditoriums are extremely popular and just limited by our own programs that are in there. They seem very strong.
Just put the right stuff.
Okay. Oops, hit it again.
Keep clicking, it'll do one at a time.
There we go. As we said, access still is, the first priority is to our in-district community groups and not so much trying to market it at this point to profit centers. Really, that's the priority. When I get requests in, I put them in order as to, you know, if you're a community group, you get on the stat first, and we kind of go from there. It's pretty simple. This slide is a comparison of hours used by category. Park District is the dark at the bottom. The numbers for the Park District are down slightly this year, and that's pretty much just because their gymnastics program has taken a little dip this year, and they're hoping those numbers are back up next year. But, between the Park District, the category A and the category B, that's all what we consider our District 99 community groups, and so that's probably about 60% of the rentals. The C category represents the rest, which has taken a bump up this year as well. A lot of that is, like I said, it's theater, auditorium use, dance recitals.
That's nice.
They love us. They could rent it out every weekend.
Oh, really? Maybe it's those sound systems, too. Right. That's great.
And then this is just real quick, revenue by user category. The A is, the A rentals is the yellow, and we are just charging them for the out-of-pocket supervision when necessary. The B category is our community groups, which is with the small facility charge, personnel, CMG, and incidentals. And then the C categories is the same cost, but a 50% bump in the facility costs.
So, we look at our future focus, and when I found that graphic, Michelle's got it there. It could be. We're trying to keep a balance between the community interest and the stewardship of our facilities, not wanting them to be overused. There's issues with field usage, you know, we do have some issues with trying to keep all teams off of them for a period of time, which is very, you know, I won't say very, but it's upsetting to some people to see an open field, but there's some times we need to have open fields so that they can, you know, grow and not get constantly trampled. But, the benefits for us to expand usage really are mitigated. There really is a dampening effect on it because we're at a point now, we're at a very high level. We've more than doubled our revenues in the last three years, and now we're really trying to just maintain at this level. So, last time we spoke, we were looking to focus and get more in. We've got more in, and when we have individuals come in, it's, again, it's break-even for most of them, so there's no financial incentive for us, and we even are having some issues with overtime, needing to get staff to work on Sundays who are in our staff, and then they're working six, seven-day weeks sometimes. So, there really not a lot of incentive for us to push them any further. And we have other individuals, and that's all they do is supervision of rentals, and so it's not everybody's from a full-time employee doing that, but we're getting to that point. And so, our focus really is to keep it balanced, maintain what we have right now. Again, we're operating very high level, but then, just really just to replace renters who leave us now, and just kind of maintain this. The one area that I would say is an area that we have some income coming off of it is the turf fields, and we aren't getting a lot of rentals on the turf fields, and it could be our price is higher than some of the surrounding ones, but we don't have a lot of open time. Our people are using our fields a lot, and so that's one thing where we said, "Oh, yeah, we should be able to rent it out," but our people love our fields, too, and so they've been using it to band. Everybody uses our fields. So, I think you're saying maybe Sundays are the time when they're most available. Not everybody wants to use them on Sunday, and some of those groups that want to use them on a Sunday are the bigger groups that really bring some other issues along with them. So, that idea of really making a profit off those fields is probably not going to pan out. We can still do that, and we still can, you know, return money back to the buildings for their stuff, but we're going to have to in the nine or 10 or 12 years, when we have to reskin those fields, we're going to have to just work that into our capital outlay plan and provide for it that way because we don't think we'll have, you know, half a million dollars for each field if that's what it ends up costing in 10 years to reskin those fields. So, that's the one thing that was different from those, but we really don't think there's going to be a lot. Now, we can tweak the dollar and see if that brings in some other groups and make it lower. Fields of 100 to 150, we're about $200 per hour on that field. So, we can maybe lower that price, but there's not a lot of open time anyways. Again, we prefer to use it for a community group anyways, not a C rental.
We had that experience.
And that's really all we have. I don't have any questions.
Football people.
Any questions? I had a few, but I'll wait.
Lights.
Oh, sure.
Anybody have any questions? Mark, I had a couple.
Sure.
One is, where did the Hornet Swim team fall in? What category did they fall in?
Where did what?
The Hornet Swim team.
They did. We have them as a B rental.
A, B, or C?
B rental.
B?
A B rental.
Okay.
The rental category price is not based on in-district or out-of-district. It's the access to the, and it's based on the percentage, and that's an access issue. But, they're a B rental, they're a nonprofit group.
Okay. My second question is, with the Park District reciprocity, has there been a pretty good, even exchange of usage of the facilities where we've given and gotten and gotten and given, or is it kind of one-way?
We have a very good working relationship with them right now. I don't know, it's really hard to equate ours, I mean, because we have the issue of using the golf course.
No, just the beat of the street.
Oh, yeah.
Just the beat of the street, so to speak.
But, you don't feel like we're short-changed, though.
No, no. We...
It's a good relationship, then.
Yeah, it's a good relationship.
Okay.
There's critical times when we need them, and they're working to help us, and there's critical programs that they have that run in our systems that we, you know, gymnastics and things like that, that we dedicate for them.
Okay.
So, no, I think it's a very good relationship with them.
And my third question was, it seems like the driving force of the financial figures are the pools. Are we covering, pools are expensive to maintain, chemicals, electricity, filtering, infrastructure. Do you feel confident that we are maintaining at least a break-even standpoint by offering up our facilities?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Very confident. We calculated this in three or four years ago, and we haven't had to change that pricing.
Okay.
We've probably, as we get through this next year, we'll take a look at it again because we've changed the HVAC system in there, and so we need to get a read on that this season and see how much our average costs are, and if anything, we're probably, you know, reduced our costs.
Right, because we've become more efficient.
Yes, it should be much more efficient. So, one issue that we're having there is the pool covers need to be replaced, which do help with the costs as well. So, we're going to net the entire system, but the sheets that go across the pools are scheduled for replacement.
Okay, thank you.
I think we saw those in the budget for this summer.
Yeah.
They are.
What about the issue of how the pool time is prioritized? Is it based on, is it based on a percentage, or is it based on the number of students?
It's based on a percentage, but quite honestly, either way, they, the Express has a higher percentage, about 70%.
70%, right.
And has, I won't say twice as many members and twice as many students, so either way, they would have more than any of the other groups that have asked to come and use it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Well, I think it's good that we leave the priorities with the community.
Absolutely.
I do, too.
Absolutely.
I don't see changing that.
No.
For any of the things.
No. And I want to thank you for actually, the two years, I came on when Ms. O'Connell stepped down and we replaced, and the driving force was to try to maximize, and it looks like we have probably hit that plateau.
Yeah, we were at a pretty good level.
Somewhat. We've increased it in the last two years, and I just want to thank you for that. So, thank you.
It really was nice to have someone focusing on it, and both Maureen and Michelle were very aggressive in doing that, and have done a good job with that. Michelle's excellent.
I didn't see anywhere in here, what kind of money are we talking about that is going back to each one of the buildings for refurbishing?
The C rental access, so if we, if a B rental to use a facility is $100, we charge a C renter $150, so 50% surcharge. And that $50 goes back, and in total dollars, what was it?
Last year was $30,000 to North.
Yeah, $30,000 to North.
$30,000 to North, and was it 10 or 18 or something like that to South?
Yeah.
So, basically, South is using their facilities more? Is that the difference, or?
No, the, one of, well, actually...
We had a big C rental.
Right.
We had a big dance recital at North last year.
North, oh.
And it generated a lot of money. It was a three-day dance recital.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, you know, I just wondered why the...
There was a difference.
Yeah, especially when, you know...
Individual events distort...
Well, one thing that's, right, and the auditorium at North is bigger than the one at South, and so that's the one that people like. And also, even though you said they moved into North, they didn't really move it.
They seemed like it, huh?
Campted out.
The church group coming in has signed a year, you know, they want to be in there at least a year. I don't think we've gotten the whole thing, but that's going to be at North, and that's $1,000 a week, and that's a C rental. So, North will probably go up a little bit next year, but it's that auditorium that's the draw.
The driving force, yeah.
Such a shame.
Okay.
So, all right, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's fine.
The same question. Okay, North has 30, South has 10,000, correct? Well, what if there's some facilities that maybe needs a little more work at South? Are they going to donate some of their money over to South and fix it up?
Our agreement with them is, once we got into C rental category, was to bring it back to the building because their CMG staff, we don't trade CMG staff.
That's true.
Typically not a lot of the supervision, and particularly if it's the auditorium, they're very possessive about their auditoriums at each school, so it'll be Bill Miller and that group at North.
And rightly so.
And so, it's, and we're in terror on those, and that's where there is going to be some lights and things like that they're going to want to replace.
And seats and...
We don't pull the money and split it, and we don't.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, like, I don't know, something breaks at South, I mean, you know, and it's not in our budget to fix it right away.
Yeah, I think they both actually are very happy with the dollar a month that they're getting back.
Would they...
So, we haven't heard any complaints from South that there be a short change?
Yeah. I shouldn't say that.
It's based on their usage.
Now's your time.
So, there shouldn't be.
Well, you never know, I mean...
Yeah, so it's like a little extra piece for them.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to comment, too, that it really is a welcome surprise that now we're practically at capacity because there was this need to grow the usage, and it seems that there is sort of a problem with overworking the staff and all of that, so I'm hoping that we can really keep that balance, and...
A lot of them love it, but then at some point, you guys have to go.
It's overtime. Well, it's overtime to them sometimes.
I actually had a follow-up to that. How do you determine who the overtime is, you know, the opportunities offered to? Are there other people that, if we're concerned about burnout, are there other people who might be willing?
We, I have a group of rental supervisors, and there are occasion that I'll open it up to anybody that wants to work, and a problem that I have is once they find out exactly what that entails, they decide they don't want to do it, which is the case with the big dance recital that's coming up. So, I do have a pool that I use quite often, and they're more than happy to work, and the same thing with the CMG, that I've been talking to them the last couple of weeks. More of the problem is not them not wanting the overtime, they don't want a short window of overtime. They don't want to come in for a two-hour job. They'd rather come in for, you know, for six hours.
Six hours.
That makes sense.
Mike, they're on a rotation too. So as overtime for the school functions and rentals, there's a sheet and a list at each school and they go down the list and offer it to everyone so they can say yes or no for it and then they go to the next person. So it's just an alpha list and it just keeps going until someone says yes.
Sort of a fair distribution.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I kind of worry about them, you know, using the fields on Sundays and, because that's time and a half or double time, isn't it? Or our...
Well, we can...
Sundays would be double time.
Double time, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
There's also a concern, we rent the outside on Sundays, but with the neighbors.
Yeah.
Right.
We're cognizant of our neighbors.
We've heard of that.
It's like to give them a break.
With the football teams and...
We've had some unusual circumstance with outside renters.
Yes, yes.
Very unusual.
Any other questions on this topic?
Only, only one little question about when we were talking about those turf fields though. Have we put those in in what year? It was, it was like...
Twenty-eleven.
Eleven, I thought it was eleven. So now we're into it four years now. And they were told, we were told how long they were going to last?
Ten.
Ten, twelve years.
Okay. So we had talked about that then, so now we're, we're so many years into this and what is our plan then? What money is going to be? Are we putting money aside like in escrow that we're going to be, you know, using that money to do that or all of a sudden at 10 years, we're going to be like, oh crap?
No, we aren't setting any, like a, setting set aside. It's just going to have to be part of the capital program at that time, you know, so it, it's going to go into the five-year, it's in the five-year plan, in that documentation, that planning process, so.
I think as important, how, since we're a third of the time in, how are, how are things holding up?
Actually, great. I, I think it'll go more than that.
I think so too.
It's going. But maybe we do one, one year and the, the second school, the second year, and then also there's a third field. So maybe we break that off and do it on capital projects for a three-year plan because that second field's a year younger at north.
Yeah, a year, I thought it was two.
But they are doing exceptionally well. I mean, the wear and tear has been phenomenal.
Yeah, they still look brand new. North still looks brand new.
We still have so many, I still get comments from not only students but parents, I mean, those are beautiful fields.
They are.
And, and better and nicer turf than many, many others.
Well, I think, I think they picked a, a little bit more premium product.
It may last a little bit longer, but it is holding up and it is...
Well, I think at the time, they weren't really sure, right, about, because there hadn't been enough of them in use. So it's great to know that they're doing well.
They did a higher grade, that does show.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on update on facility rentals? Okay, moving on, freedom of information requests?
Well, thank you, Mr. Pavanato. We had two freedom of information requests last month and both were fulfilled with a letter from Mr. Staley.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda.
Before we, before we start the consent agenda, Pete, you want to review?
Sure.
We, we had to make a couple of changes based on recent informa-, information we received on Friday. So just want to make sure the board is aware of those.
Yeah, Friday was our monthly HR director's meeting and we had Todd Faulkner and Shelley Anderson there as our guest presenters. Every month we have different law groups come in and so they were talking about the recent changes to the RIF laws and the way you look at your part-time staff. And historically, most districts have released all of their part-time people.
Right.
But with the new RIF laws, you should only be releasing them if it's for performance and you should not be releasing them if you're planning on bringing them back at the same level.
Really?
Or higher. So there are a couple of small changes to what we had discussed on Wednesday. We had nine part-time staff on the list to be released.
Right.
Five of them are now on the renewal list because they're moved, three of them are moving from either a .8 or a .9 to a full-time. And two of them are coming back at the same level that they were at currently this year. So then we have four individuals who we are releasing, all four of whom will probably return to us in some capacity. We're just not sure exactly at what level yet and so to be on the safe side, we are releasing them.
Wow.
So the names are slightly different from where you saw them at the Wednesday workshop meeting.
And this all came about on Friday?
On Friday.
Okay.
It was timely.
Is that going to make a difference in their status if we decide...
Well, they only, well, status in terms of like tenure attainment, you're only on the tenure track once you become full-time.
Full-time.
So for the three people that were going to be full-time next year, they're just, that, they're just going to be in year one.
That's when the cost starts.
Okay, so it, it doesn't make a difference because I, I thought that was the reason why we sometimes let them go at the end, so that it didn't...
I'm sure historically, I think it allowed, by releasing them, it allowed for later decisions in the spring in terms of who you were going to bring back and at what levels. But with some of the recent changes, Senate Bill Seven and some of the other things, it's caused everybody to have to manage this a little bit differently.
Is there any TRS issues with this?
Nope.
So I looked at this over the weekend, are, is what, what's in the consent agenda correct then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we made the changes on Friday.
You made the change on Friday to what's been put up.
So after Friday, this is what it is?
Yes.
All right, okay. Going on, is there a motion to prove the consent agenda is presented?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye. Dr. McDonald, do I need to do each one individually, A, B, C, and D, or can I do it all at once?
Recommendations for action, I think we have to do each one of these separately.
Okay. Let's go to B then. Can I have a motion?
We haven't done A. We just did the consent agenda.
We just did the consent and now A is separate from that.
Right.
Okay.
It's confusing because we, in a sense, we're doing the same thing, but because the...
We're doing it twice. I hear you.
It's just confusing.
Let's tackle consent agenda A. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A.
I'll move that we...
This is a recommendation.
Right.
No, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rick.
We're done the consent.
We're done with the consent agenda.
Now we're done with recommendations for action. All right, that's...
So you thought we had to do each one of the consent individually? No.
No.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants us to, we don't.
Okay. Let's do recommendations for action then and can I have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing notice of honorable dismissal of non-tenure teachers other than final year probationary teachers and that the president and secretary be authorized to sign the same?
So moved.
I second.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye. Moving on, can I have a motion to accept administration's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the three-year lease proposal from Wintrust Capital and that the Board President, Secretary, and Administration be authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the lease agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Before, before the board votes...
Discussion?
Pardon me?
Discussion, or?
Right. This is, is you're aware, Mark has been negotiating for this lease. We've already discussed it previously, or that's, I've said the same thing twice. We've discussed it previously.
Yep.
Mark is prepared to answer any questions about it. This is one of those time-sensitive issues. In order for us to begin on time, we need to approve this lease relatively quickly.
I'm glad that it's with a community bank of Downers, well, Wintrust, which is associated with Community Bank of Downers Grove. So that was nice to see and seems like good terms. So...
Everything was really thorough.
The, the documents were presented to us over the weekend. I had a chance to read them.
I did too.
Anybody else have any questions on the documents?
Looks like a good document.
Okay, should we continue with the motion then?
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
No.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye. Okay, moving on, before we seek a motion, is there any discussion you'd like to have about the approval of the special education transportation contract?
You have to have a motion.
Oh, we do. Okay, let's have a motion to approve the three-year contract with Septran Incorporated to provide special education transfer safety services to District 99.
So moved.
Oh, a tie.
I'll give it to Julie.
One to Julia, two to...
I'll second.
Pay me for mine.
Thank you.
Two to Davenport.
If I could, just, just a little bit of explanation, I think the contract probably would have rolled over to Septran, but there wasn't a request for bid from another vendor.
Right.
So it went out to bid, but Septran still came in as the lower, as the lower of three bids, I think.
Right. Three were invited and said they would, but only three put in.
Septran was considerably lower and they provided good service.
Right. And I think it's important for the public to know that SACID actually is the one, they, they do the contract with this for all 14 of the districts that are involved with, with SACID. So it's nothing that Mr. Staley or...
It's nothing that he's given out.
Has negotiated, so just so the public knows that, yeah.
Right, right. It's a, it's a nice way to do things and it's probably a better deal for everybody and...
Okay, should we continue the motion?
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
And Rick Pavanato?
Aye. Moving on, reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board. Would anybody like to address the board? Okay, moving on, let's go to communications and announcements. Would we have a report on Legislative Education Network at DuPage?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Is there a report on the School Association for Special Education, DuPage County?
In addition to the vote that we just made, just very quickly, wanted to let you know that Southeast Alternative School, which is what we are most heavily involved with, has been, has reached its capacity.
Wow.
And of course, that's a, a rolling number. It can change on a dime actually, but right now they're at 105, which is the capacity. And once again, there have been some class, some school districts who have stepped up to provide some space because SACID had to leave a couple of buildings that we've been using for years and years. But District 66 has stepped up and I believe District 180 also, they're still looking for some middle school space, but that's not us, so. But just another quick note, that the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program continues to go down a little bit and that's kind of good news because there are some other technologies that are helping the deaf and hard of hearing students. So it's gone from still 90 to 84 and some of the other programs are fairly, are pretty substantially the same. And also there is a tentative agreement with the support staff and that negotiation's been going on for quite a while, but I believe they haven't met yet to, they will not be meeting to, to ratify it or vote on it, I should say, for a little while, so we don't know yet how that will come out. But that was a long, kind of a long process, but they're happy to have that done.
Okay. A report on Illinois Humanities Council?
I just wanted to quickly talk about, very quickly, the Capitol Forum, which is the Humanities Council sponsors. It is for high schools, which is why I'm bringing it up. And there are several area high schools that are involved in it. It has, it involves civics education and we've had, we've had discussions about that.